Call to order the regular common council meeting, Monday, April 17th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Frye? McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Well, the person Frye is excused tonight, and the next item is Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting was noticed on Friday, April 14th. Agenda's posted at the library post office in City Hall.
Council acceptance of the agenda?
Wants to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next item is a public hearing. The common council here comments regarding special assessments for the 2017 sidewalk project. And if anyone wishes to speak, we'd like you to come up to the podium so we can record this and state your name and an address for the record, please.
San Donovan, 610 Washington Street, Edgerton. I have a few questions about the estimate that was sent out. The last meeting we were at, someone had said that it was going to be $80 to $100 per block. Right now, I have supposedly three blocks, and they're costing me $517. If this is an estimate, what are the parameters of this estimate? Because according to the papers that I got, it said that the final cost would not be available until after the work was done. Are the parameters today to jack this up 10%, 50%, 200%? These are things I need to know before I can make an educated assessment of what I need to do for my own property and what my finances are. My second question is, I asked over a month ago for someone to come out and recheck my sidewalks because two of the blocks are less than a quarter of an inch difference, and they are marked to be replaced. No one has contacted me, and no one has been out there to check them. How long do I have to wait before someone gets out there to check them? My third question. How much is it to remove and replace a block per square foot? This way, I can judge how much it's going to cost. A reputable cement contractor should know exactly how much it should cost per square foot. Thank you.
Thank you.
The bid price was $6 per square foot.
Okay, then I should only be paying $288 instead of $517.
In addition to that, there are engineering costs. So the 16 square feet is $96? No, $110, excuse me. With engineering, $110 per square. So if you have a four-foot wide sidewalk on one square to be replaced, you can use the number $110 per square.
That still only comes up to $330.
You have-
Where do I get $517?
According to the schedule, you have 75 square feet to be replaced. So the city engineer can come out and look at your project.
Can he call me before he comes out so that I can be there with him?
Well, we will certainly do our best to accommodate schedules, but you know-
I am home 99% of the time.
Okay. Can you stop at City Hall and give us a name and the phone number for that so we can get ahold of you?
Sure. I'll give it to you tonight.
Parameters, what are? Just depends on what the square footage ends up as.
Is the question what the-
The 10 to 200% more, is the question there.
Oh, the charges are what the bid price is, which we have now. Before, when we were estimating, we were doing that, estimating. We now have bid prices. So it's bid prices plus the engineering costs. So those are the numbers. We don't expect those numbers to change. The only thing that would change is the quantity of sidewalk might change. So otherwise, the number at this point is relatively firm.
Anyone else?
Dennis Carruthers, 1101 North Main Street, Edgerton Floral and Garden Center. Problem we're having is our sidewalk is sinking, and this is from the construction when they redid the road through town, what, 15, 20 years ago? They had issue. We had no issues with the sidewalk until that happened, and then we had a sinkhole, which the city's fixed. And I've talked to Tom about this. Now every winter, the sidewalk sinks. And every time it rains, and Tom knows this, every time it rains, road floods there because it's not draining properly, and it's undermining the sidewalk, and that's why the sidewalk is sinking. You know, and we talked, like I said, I talked to Tom, and it's not the city's fault, it's not our fault, but our question is, what happens five years down the road when the same thing is happening? Because clearly, there's a problem under the sidewalk. And worst case scenario, what happens if the road, what if the sinkhole gets bigger and the road collapses? Are we liable for all of that?
The road, no.
Okay. Because it's a, I mean, it's a road construction problem, not a tree, root problem or anything like that.
My recollection-
It just doesn't drain properly there.
My recollection was that there was an adjustment made to the assessment for the city taking responsibility for some of the sidewalk repair?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, like, and we're okay with all that. We're just, what happens five years? Are we going to be going through the same thing five years from now? Because I'm tearing it up, putting some fill under there, and it's not going to fix the problem. It's a drain. There's a problem with the drain, you know? So are we going to have to fix it every so many years? You know?
We don't know. We can't tear up the street anymore. We're hoping this holds for quite a while.
Yeah.
But we'll see.
So do I understand correctly, though, that you or the business is not assuming any cost for this?
No, we're-
Okay.
We, Tom and I talked, we, you know, obviously, like I say, it's not the city's fault, and I don't think the city should be liable for all of it, and I don't think we should be liable for it. So we, you know, we came to an agreement, and that's, we're kind of cool with that.
Good.
I just, like I say, it's what happens in the future is, I guess, the biggest thing for us. If we've got to fix it every five years, that gets to be not fixing the root of the problem, you know?
I know they fixed that, that corner when they did Highway 51 back in 99, 2000.
Yeah.
And then they had to come back and refix it again. I remember shoemaker came up there, GMS, and so it's always been kind of a problem there.
Yeah, I know when they, when they redid it, that stretch just in front of us to the pig this last summer.
Right.
When they tore it out, the guys said that when they poured the storm drain the last time, they didn't pour any footings under it. That storm drain tilted back.
Oh.
So they put a new one in, and they said it would fix it. But, I mean, just last week, Tom, we were out there, he saw it flooded there with that last rain we had last week, so still, still we're having a drain problem, so.
Well, it was a good heads up to look at it, and I said, you know, definitely take a look at it. How long has that sidewalk been there? When was it last put in?
When the street was redone in 98.
So it's took 19 years to get to where it is now. So if it gets replaced-
When we take it out this year, we're going to add fill and build that area up and then repour the sidewalk, so.
And you expect that to last?
Another 19, 20 years.
Better than five, so I'm just, yeah. Thank you. Anyone else? Couple of you there.
104 West Street. I just had a question about, is there going to be like an extension with deciding if we can get our own contractors or have the city do the work since they've come out and kind of re-marked some of the sidewalks, and it'll be reassessed? Because now I have less markings than before, and like my bill's like $531, and there's only one section that's marked on the area.
Any modifications that were made since the letters have gone out? Will they, yes, they will be recognized if the contractor only replaces what has to be replaced? So we have a running schedule of those that will communicate with the contractor. So that was your second question. What was your first question?
Are you going to then let us know like what that is and give us time to decide? Because like the deadline was like April 28th. That doesn't give us very long to make a decision if we're going to have the city do it, or if we're going to have our own contractors?
I see. I guess we could, that, I guess the, we could share with you very quickly if you know how many squares you're going to tell you what it'll cost. So if, again, if we could get a contact information from you, we could let you know. And so by the 28th, we really would like to know who is in and out of the project. That would be helpful for us to, in order to tell our, let our contractor know, so.
Is there someone that could come and do like where the property line or the lot lines are or something like that? Because there's one section of sidewalk that's like right next to the neighbor's driveway, so I'm assuming that it's theirs, but I don't want to assume that. I want to know for sure.
Yeah, we, if it's too close to call, then a surveyor ultimately has to be, has to determine where those property lines are. Our engineer has done their best in taking what information we have available to us to, in order to determine where corners are. So again, it's probably best if you have a question about where your line is to talk with the engineer in the field.
That does through the city hall, but does it charge for that?
Yes. No. If you give us your contact info, the surveyor, there would be a charge for it. That's not done through the city. That's through a private surveyor. But the city engineer, if there's a question about a lot line, he may not be able to resolve it, but certainly the first step would be to meet in the field.
Well, you know, I just want to know if the sidewalk is our responsibility or the neighbor's.
He can, the best we can do is tell you who we think it belongs to based on the information we have. If you're, if you think that's incorrect, then we would have to resolve that issue with a neighbor, and ultimately, maybe someone would have to get a surveyor.
Okay. And then tonight, are you guys like deciding like, or are you decided like if you can hire like contractors or do the work yourself or have the city do it? Is that three different options, or is that what we're discussing?
Tonight is the, this issue is a public hearing, so we're talking about the ability to charge people for their sidewalk. Later on, we will, there's a motion to award a contract to a contractor, but your decision about if you are in the city's contract or you do it yourself is your choice, and that's the deadline of April 28th, that you would need to let us know if you want to have a contractor do it, do it for you, or if you want to be in the city's program.
And then in the letter, you said that, that we can contact somebody to determine if we're able to do that ourselves?
Well, the, but the letter indicated was if you're going to do your own work, some of the options, which are not replacement options, require a determination if your sidewalk is eligible for alternative methods that aren't replacement, mudjacking, sawcutting, those kinds of things. So if that's something you're considering, and you need to know whether or not you're eligible, the Public Works Director number in that letter, Tom Hartzell would be the one who would make the determination, because some sidewalks are, are out of repair to such a degree that they would not be eligible for those kinds of modifications that needs to be replaced. So that's, you need to, if you're considering those options, then you need to talk with the Public Works Director and get direction there.
And then I'd be able to know before the 28th from you then? Because like none of our sidewalks are cracked. It's like it's less than a half an inch where there's a difference in the sidewalks.
Have you requested someone from engineering firm to come up and double look at your sidewalks? Because sometimes they've come back up and said they're not in a program anymore, because they, they meet the-
No, because I had contacted them about, I think like about a month ago, because they marked all of the sidewalks like in the fall, but then you had the winter, and none of those markings are still there. So then we get the letter saying they need to be replaced, and you don't know what they're talking about. So they just came out just last week to remark that.
Oh, they did remark them?
Just last week.
Okay. You can request a talk, like a previous person did, request to have someone from engineering company and talk to you personally, you can.
Okay. And then just talk to somebody after this meeting to get some contact information?
Please.
Yes. And then you did raise a question. I've heard a lot out there that one of the very first part of your question was have an extension to make that decision from April 20th to like, say, May, whatever, May 10th or whatever. You, you looking for time, is that what you're saying, to make that decision?
Right.
Okay.
Because this is just like a week later, so you know, we have to do something that you need a contractor to do. You've got to find somebody and get their estimate would be your special assessment.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Thomas Prater. I live at 501 Ridgeway Street. And one little question I have is, what exactly is this area that you have on a little map to propose thing where you're doing the replacement? I've like walked the whole area, every sidewalk. What is the criteria? Because you've got people saying it's a quarter, a half. I've found hundreds that are more than that, nothing's marked. What is the criteria in that area to get them fixed? Either fix the ones that are broke, or how, how does that work?
The, the area that's included is, we have a map, which we could share with you. We haven't-
I got the map. Yeah, I looked at all the sidewalks in that map, and there's several that aren't marked that are more than peoples that are marked. So what is the criteria for marking when some aren't marked that really are trip hazards? What's that criteria?
There's a city ordinance that describes what the criteria is.
Then why are some not marked? And what is that order, how does that, how does that work if some are, should be marked and aren't?
Could the marks be gone?
Yeah, or the marks could be gone.
No, they were never marked. You can tell, they were never marked.
So there's, there is no question that this is, there is no perfect process. So we have a city engineer, right? So, but we have to proceed, right? We have to proceed with the best information we have available.
So maybe go out and look at them again and add another 200 or 300 slabs on there, or how does that work?
Well, if you have some that are in particular concern of yours, we would welcome your information, and then we can get them in a future project, because we're trying to resolve the problems. So there's-
I'm just kind of curious, because it's really not rocket scientists, rocket science doing this. And there's ones that are, it's obvious that ones get missed, and you just wonder, how does that work?
Yeah, we do our best. That's how we do it.
Is that how it is? Just the best, that's, that's it?
Well, there isn't any other thing we can't do than our best. So if you have someone you have a concern about, it would be great to know where those are.
I'm just saying, when you look around, it's just, it's not, it's not quite right. That's what I'm saying. And so besides that.
I was going to interject here. You said you wonder what the criteria is. What's the criteria, Tom?
I mean, is there measurements?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Is it a half or three quarters?
I got, you got some people saying a quarter and a half. I, I've walked and found ones that are over an inch and a half, and they're not, they were never marked, and they aren't marked.
Well, we can settle that right now. What's the criteria? So he knows.
It depends on the circumstance. It's a crack, it's a raised, it's, you know, there are several-
If it's raised, what's the criteria then?
I'm talking the slabs are uneven, nothing's cracked, but there's one even sunk a little, and you've got a trip hazard. Half inch, that's what it is.
It's a half inch. There you go.
Half inch?
Anything over a half inch or a half inch and over needs to be repaired.
Okay. All right.
I see what you're saying. Just let us know if you know, if you find them, just let, let us know, you know?
I can find them. There's hundreds. I mean, so obviously, some weren't looked at or-
Tom, you don't have the full spreadsheet, so you don't know. So our engineer has looked at all these. He's walked the entire area. He has a spreadsheet. So for you to say that, you don't know-
I don't mean that. I just mean there are some that are, aren't marked.
But you don't know if they're on the list or not.
Oh, and, oh, they could be on the list and not marked?
Yes.
Oh, okay. That's, okay, I just thought for sure they would be marked. No, that's okay. That's good to know. I didn't know that, you know? But I'll know after they all get fixed, if they didn't get fixed, you know?
Right.
That's okay. That's, that's okay. I got, I got one that's a little out of, that is, it's a trip hazard. It's not cracked, but sunk. And you said there might be like the alternative option. How do you, would you have to determine?
Yes.
How, how would I go about having you just come and look at one? Because I, I don't, I, I'm gone all the, I mean, can you just come and look at it and look at it, or does someone have to be there?
Give me a number, and I can look at it, and I'll call you back.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, if you can just look and see if that's a possibility of one that can be done one way or another, leave me a message. If, if it's got to be done, it's got to be done. I mean, one has no cracks, but it did sink, so. And there's one, it's not cracked, and there's no trip hazard, and it's a weird sidewalk. It's been that way since my mom and, since I was a kid going to grade school. And I wondered what now made them decide to fix it. It is kind of a weird, it's, I can't explain it to you, but it's always been that way, but now they're going to replace it. I don't, I don't know. I said, maybe look, look at my two and just see if I have any options. That's all I really ask, you know? And then I have one by the bridge. Am I liable for that one, too?
Yep.
Okay.
50% of the cost.
On the bridge one, right?
Correct.
That's cool.
There's a talk about debating of that cost or two if we've got to that final point yet. We're doing 50%. People raised a question about the city covering all of it for dial.
That's still a little bit up in the air.
Right.
Right, not that. Right, right. Because there were times where sometimes the, the heavy equipment totally wrecked those, every single, you know? I tried to do my own, but I know the ones when the, if the Bobcat thing, not the sweeper, but the, sometimes if they use the Bobcat with the shovel, fricking, it, every one of those, just, they're all, they're all ruined, they're all ruined around the bridge. They're all ruined, because the Bobcat, it kind of catches the edges. Once they start getting broken, they just go, you know, once it gets a little broke, they just disintegrate, so. But I mean, that's fine. That's fine as far as the, that one. Now, that might not be quite determined yet. The bridge one?
The current policy is 50% of, any sidewalks next to bridge abutments are 50% city, 50% property owner. That's what you, that's what your letter would have indicated.
That's the current policy, but there's talk about the, the city doing it in the preliminary stages of paying for that. There's talk about it, so that hasn't been decided yet totally.
No, that's cool. I got two letters. I didn't understand, I got two, and I couldn't figure it out. One, each one has two different prices. It's the weirdest thing I've ever seen in my life. I got two. I don't get it. One has a small number, which that's what I wish it was, but I know it's not. One says $69, and one is probably the correct one, a 400 and something. I don't get, I don't understand what it is.
I'd be happy to look at those after the meeting, if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great. That's, that's about it.
All right. Thank you. If there's anyone that has personal questions or want the staff to look at them individually and see if you can do them on your own, rather than coming up and telling us here, stick around afterwards, and we'll get your name and numbers, and have Tom or somebody come out and take a look at it to see what needs to be done, or if you can do the grinding, or what other options are available. So anything with personal questions like that, if, if it's okay with, with you, just give us your name and number afterwards, and we'll take care of it from there, rather than making you up here and speak. Now, if there's anyone that wants to speak on that or anything else with this issue, come on up now. Okay.
Just a quick question. Who were the other companies that bid on that?
There are just another company there was. Marvin Gleason, a contractor, for $198,000, and Jim Johnson did one for $142,000-ish.
Right. Did you pick them all?
Well, we'll be, yeah, tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Debbie Olson, this is Sol on Washington Street. I just have a question, first of all, and a couple of things that I want to discuss. First of all, is I'd just like to know where the citizens can get a copy of the city ordinance that we, regarding the sidewalk variations that we issued out.
There are copies here at City Hall and all online.
Are they?
Yes.
Okay, how did you find that?
Sidewalks. Search on sidewalks on our website.
Okay, I had somebody contact me, and she put it up. And the other thing I just want to mention, and hopefully that you will consider, is that it seems like a lot of these folks need a little bit of extra time to think about whether they want to get their sidewalks fixed by an outside contractor or go with the city's bid. And also, if you don't extend the time, I'm afraid that Mr. Hartzell in his department will be really overworked this week. So I'd just like to ask if you might consider an extension of that time.
And that's also in the next item here.
And the extension of the contract, when we are to give the contractor the final list is what is in the contract, and if that is a piece of conversation, that would be the time to have that during that award, because that's part of that contract.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? If there is no one else, we will officially close the public hearing and move on to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 1117, preliminary resolution declaring the city council's intentions for the 2017 sidewalk project to exercise special assessment police powers.
Make a motion to adopt City of Edgerton Resolution 11-17, preliminary resolution declaring the city council's, its council's intentions for the 2017 sidewalk project to exercise special assessment police powers and to designate a $200 minimum for special assessments with a five-year loan at 3.75%.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Everybody understand that one out there that think about it'll?
What is that?
Okay, if it's, if it's over $200, you can, was it three years you said, or five?
Five.
Five years. If it's, if it's over $200, you can finance it through the city for up to five years at 3.75%?
Correct. If this motion passes.
Yeah. If you want, if you want the city to do it, that's what it is. If not, you can do it yourself.
When do you, when do you pay it, like debtors, like, when, if you're just going to pay it, can you just pay it?
Correct. We'll send you an invoice, and you can pay the whole invoice if you want, if you want it financed.
Like if you just come down here and pay it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's cool.
Any further discussion?
Is it put on your tax, your tax bill if you do a financial benefit?
Correct.
So as stated, this is preliminary resolution, but the total numbers aren't in yet. Anyone else? Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Motion passes. We will continue with the regular agenda. It shouldn't take us too long to get through this for anybody that wants to stick around and leave their name and address and questions that you might have for staff, so. Next item is personal appearances for anyone that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. for anybody that wants to stick around and leave their name and address and questions that you might have for staff. So, next item is personal appearances for anyone that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. Okay. Then the minutes from April 3rd.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Many reports with Finance Committee.
I will make a motion to approve the bills and payroll in the amount of $173,257.04.
Second.
Any questions on the bills? Hearing none, roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to make a change of agent for Town Country Club's Class B combination license to Michael Hesselman.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve a public event pack at Frederick Clay Day and Pottery Festival in way of the fees.
Second.
Any discussion? I should take mine home, it's still sitting back here. Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion to approve bids for the 2017 sidewalk project from Johnson Brothers in the amount of $142,000, $142,100.
Second.
Chris, is this where we're talking about doing some things here? Earlier?
On the dates?
Yeah.
Or not? This would be where we could do that, couldn't we?
The contract indicates that we will have a final list of the contractor by June 15. We've spoken with the contractor, and then that date could be as late as July 15 if that's what the council wishes. But anything beyond that probably will end up costing money because contractor will have to move around the city. So, we need to have a final list by the latest July 15. The current contract says June 15, so you'd have to amend that as part of your motion.
I'll make an amendment.
For what?
To extend the...
To what?
What Ramona just mentioned.
July 15?
To July 15.
From June 15 to July 15?
Yeah, I talked to contractor too, and he, I brought it to the city administrator earlier today, then they called the contractor, and he got hold of me, and they're all from here.
So, um...
Let's have the work done.
I have a...
To have the work completed.
Oh, to have the work completed.
Because that's the date we have to tell the contractor who's in the program, what sidewalks are in.
Because if we had the June 15, we would still have to have the residents let us know by April 28, you said?
Yeah, that's what the current date is. And I guess the, we could, if that date needs to slide, if the other one does, we probably can. I'm just thinking of the...
Week, or not?
Yeah, I think that it's possible to move that date too, if you're going to move the other date. So...
Well, I'm just wondering, so it's, without moving to June 15, can we move the April 28 date without moving to June 15?
I think, I think...
Or not? Or would that be too difficult?
I don't, I don't, I think we can. I think that especially this contractor doesn't want to start till later, so I don't think we're going, the concern would be is if we don't have enough information for the contractor to start their work, and then the contractor starts, and then people need to be added back in, and we'll get, you know, re-mobilization, because they'll have to move around.
Let me see if I have beat on this. Right now, it's April 28 for the citizens to say if they're in or out.
Correct.
And it's June 15 for the work to be completed?
Correct.
Okay.
No, not the work to be completed.
The work by the private, yes, your private contractor has to be...
By the private contractors.
Private contractor to be completed.
Correct.
Okay, otherwise, we could consider moving one or both of those dates.
Yes, and the contractor, the June 15 date is a contract date. The other date is a policy, is an administrative date. But the June 15 date is in the contract. So, if you want to amend that, certainly as part of your motion this evening to accept, to award the contract, you should change that date.
And the contractor is for that.
Okay with that.
Willing to do it, yes.
Sorry, it's different than me for it.
Yes.
Okay, he's agreeable.
And that's the way the motion is right now to move it.
So, the April date...
Do we have a second on the amendment?
Wait, yeah, I'm confused on this amendment. They haven't made the motion here, so how is he making the amendment?
Amendment to the motion to add on, to extend the date.
Change the contract date.
The contract date to July 15 versus June 15. What are you going to do with the April 28?
We haven't got that one yet.
We should have, we should have a second on Matt's motion to amend.
I thought we did.
I don't think we had.
Right, he needs to make a motion to amend. He can't just amend my motion.
No, right, well, whatever, you know.
Well, then you need to make the motion, Matt.
He did.
I'll make a motion.
He made his motion.
Can you resume your motion?
I don't even think we have a second on the motion.
Make a motion to amend the contract, so the start date will be July 15 versus June 15.
What start date?
I believe it's actually the completion date of the private, of a private contractor must be done, but July 15.
The language indicates that we will have the final list, says, "Some of the 2017 sidewalk program work scope will be maybe completed by private landowners prior June 15, 2017. Quantity adjustments to the bid will be made, will be made if this occurs. The owner will notify the contractor of this change before the start of contractor work." So, that's the date that is in the contract that we have to be sensitive to.
Well, I got, this, risk of...
Still don't have a second on the amendment, so...
I don't even think we have a second on the original. We do?
You seconded it.
I seconded yours, okay.
Is there a second to amend the date to July 15? Is there a second to amend the date for completion to July 15? Okay, one more time. Is there a second to the motion to...
Is that for the completion for the private people?
Private completion.
I meant when you give people an extra time to really privately, that makes no sense.
Is there a second to that motion to do so?
Um, you know what? I will second it for further discussion.
There you go.
I think we need some more discussion, because I have, I'll be honest with you. There's too many people putting in their, what they want and what they wanted people to hear. I'm getting confused about what...
I agree with that, what's going on.
So, I think people need to keep their personal opinions and agendas aside, and let's talk about what the current contract states, and what the citizens are asking for, and what we can and cannot do.
Right.
So, Ramona, if you would please refresh...
So, just to keep the record straight, so the motion fails, for lack of a sound...
No, Candy said for further discussion.
Yeah.
So, would you mind, one more time, telling us what the, now, this, we're talking about the J.B. Johnson Brothers, correct?
That's one of the issues.
The contract.
Correct.
That the city has with them.
Correct.
To do our sidewalk work. And that contract, they want us to have what done by what time?
We told them in the contract that is up for consideration, that we would have for them the final list of everyone who's in the program by June 15.
Okay.
And that final isn't a list of who says they're going to do their sidewalk. It's the people who have or have not done their sidewalk. So, if someone hasn't completed their project, they're in the city's project, because that's their deadline, for the citizens to do the work on their own.
So, the citizens must have their work done by June 15 for us to comply with...
The current contract.
The current contract with the Johnson group.
Correct. So, the amendment that's been made to the original motion changes that date to July 15, and the contractor would be willing to accept that.
And have you talked with the contractor?
Yes.
And they're okay with that?
Yeah.
And are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll still get everything done in time and everything? It sounds like it'd be a win-win. Okay.
Yep, they have a September, and then a final October date, so, and they were comfortable with that.
Good. Okay.
Then that gives the people that want to do it themselves, at least another month, to consider it or get somebody in that can do it. Otherwise, it's a pretty tight timeframe right now.
Thank you, I appreciate...
What we're basically trying to guard against here is people that saying by, they come to us and say on April 20, yes, I'm going to have it done, and then June 15 rolls around, and it's not done. July 15 rolls around, then it's not done. That's what we're trying to avoid, because people might be able to commit to having it done, but for whatever reason, change their mind, find out that it was more expensive than they originally thought. That's why I don't know why it's so important to go to July 15, but I guess if the contractor's okay with it, I just, it's not...
Right. So, what about if we put another, a date for people, like we did April 28? Then what would the date be in May to say whether they're going to have somebody do it or not? Why wouldn't we just extend that date, and we still would cover anybody, right?
That's not part of the contract.
Isn't, that's a policy.
A policy, right.
So, at some point, I don't know, Bill, where the, if the appropriate, has to go back to a committee, or the council under this agenda item can discuss that, but that is something that...
Okay.
It's part and parcel of the project. I'd be comfortable with the council giving you direction as to when, to accept notification that, of the intent to self-repair.
Okay, so that's eligible for conversation now?
Okay.
But, and we're only on the amendment right now. I just want to bring everyone back that we still have to vote on the amendment, then we can vote on the main motion, or perhaps another internation of the main motion.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing that back up.
Good. Any more discussion on the consideration to move the completion date by the public to July 15? Hearing none, roll call.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Now, we're back to the original motion to approve the contract. Is there more discussion on that now? Hearing none, roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
That motion passes. Now, is this the time where we can bring up the, moving the...
Yeah.
Whether or not you're...
Yes, yeah. Now would be the only appropriate time on the agenda.
Okay.
This would just be to give direction to the staff as to when would be an appropriate time to accept notification from the public of their intent to self-repair. So, if you're comfortable giving additional time beyond April 28, now would be the time to give that indication.
An additional two weeks, maybe? I mean, we're not too far out yet, we're still...
There you go.
Make a motion to extend the deadline that we have here for, by two weeks.
Maybe to May 15, or...
I'll second that.
Eight, two weeks would be the 12th.
What is that extended date of notice?
Notice, yes.
The date they have to reply to the city's provided information is whether or not they're in the program, or if they're in the city's program, or if they're going to do it on their own.
Two weeks would be the 12th. If you want to go with the 15th, that's the Monday following, so...
We'll go with the 15th.
We need a specific date. Yeah, we'll go with the 15th. No, he just said, I agree. I'm not laughing, I'm saying I agree.
15.
You're taking it wrong.
May 15th.
Laughing at your interpretation.
It'd be done as a motion, or should it just be done as a...
A motion was made. I think it's a clear record, then. Let's just... Yeah. I think this sounds really great. The process went through. You got an extra month to, if you do set a repair, now you get an extra, till May 15, to just tell the city if you, you know, want to do it yourself, and you'll get a letter stating it. The people will.
That this motion passes.
Yeah.
The only other thing I would like to say is, I think, between the citizens and then the council here, as well as the Public Works Group, everybody has worked very good together. I think there's been some questions and a few little tenuous times, but for the most part, everybody worked pretty good. I have family that lives in Stoughton, and my sister's sidewalk and threshold to her driveway, apron, they're doing some roadwork in the sidewalk, and she's charged everything. City is not paying for anything.
And there's some cities that pay for it.
A hundred percent.
Over Milton, the city pays for it.
And she is being charged thousands of dollars for something that the city wants to do, including the sidewalk. So, and all I'm saying is, I think that we did a good job coming together and working where other areas might just kind of mandate something, and nothing is discussed. So, I think kudos to everybody here and the citizens for bringing up any concerns.
This is the first year, maybe two more years coming down the line. We're working out the bugs of it to make it as better and palatable as much as possible, with everyone involved, the citizens, the staff, the council members. It's...
I make a motion to call the question.
So, thank you for coming down. Okay, roll call. We got to make a second on his...
There was.
There was a second.
Was a second?
To call the question?
Yes. Oh, not to call the question, no.
Oh, second.
I should really call the question on some other people sometime.
Okay. No discussion on this one, roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Okay, now, the motion for the date to be moved back to the 15th for commitment. Roll call.
Steen?
Yes.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good luck, everyone.
Next item is to consider a high bid for the sale of a lawnmower.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the high bid for the lawnmower in the amount of $2,625.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm going to make a motion to allow for a purchase of a DPW trailer from Fagan Truck and Trailers in the amount of $1,650.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have for finance.
Thank you. Anything from utilities?
Nothing from utilities to bring forward.
Okay, next item is consider adoption of City of Edgerton declaring the Week of the Young Child.
I make that a motion.
You got to read it.
Oh, okay, there you go. I will.
Whereas the City of Edgerton and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the Week of Young Child, Week of the Young Child in April 23, 2017, through April 29, 2017. And whereas by calling attention to the need for high-quality early childhood services for all children and families within our community, these groups hope to improve the quality and availability of such services, and whereas high-quality early childhood services represent a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Edgerton does hereby proclaim April 23, 2017, through April 29, 2017, as the Week of the Young Child, and will kick off the event with a kids' fair.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Other than the grammar is terrible. I got to read this up there, and it's one sentence, so... Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, oh, those opposed. Motion passes. The next item is to consider adoption of City of Edgerton Declaration honoring Cory Steen.
Make that a motion.
You want me to read this for you, since I got it right here in front of me for him?
Do you have to read it before it's seconded, or does it have to be seconded before you read it?
It's seconded.
Okay.
Could read it after we pass it, but...
Okay, just wondering.
City of Edgerton Declaration recognizing and honoring alderperson Cory Steen for his public service to the City of Edgerton. Whereas Cory Steen admirably served the residents of the Second District and the entire City of Edgerton as alderperson from September 2016 through April 2017. And whereas Cory Steen's tenure on the city council coincided with the reconstruction of Highland and Park Avenue, Tiff 5 expansion of the Brailsford Junctionway, completion of wastewater treatment plant, and recreation of Reinhardt Townhouses. Whereas Cory Steen served on the Utility Commission, Personnel Committee, Library Board, Public Safety Committee, Public Works Committee, Economic Development Corporation, and the revolving loan fund committee. And whereas the City of Edgerton was served well by Cory Steen throughout his time as alderperson as he signified, signific, significant...
Signified.
Significant honesty, leadership, and dedication to the community. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the City of Edgerton Common Council on behalf of the entire City of Edgerton hereby recognizes and honors Cory Steen for his public service to the citizens of Edgerton as alderperson, commends him for his dedication to the community, thanks him for his active role in the many activities, and wishes him well in the future endeavors. Any discussion? Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
For all you, and everything you've done.
Roll call.
Happy to do it.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Andy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
It's like, do I really?
I think that passed.
It sounded like it was all yeses. Okay. Here, alderperson's staff reports. Well, anyone from Edgerton here? Got a letter here from Edgerton, Alberta, Canada. They're inviting us up there to celebrate their 100th anniversary on August 11, 12, and 13. So, if anybody wants anything to do for a weekend in Canada...
They paying the airfare?
Yeah, are they paying for it?
Doesn't mention airfare, it just says parade, walk of heroes at the cemetery, ice cream making, rope making, threshing at the museum, fireworks, kids' activities, brewery tours.
Brewery?
New fire hall tours, et cetera. It will be a fun weekend.